Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special edition school committee meeting on a Wednesday with a shorter than usual agenda. So we're going to be beginning with an executive session if the committee votes to enter into one. So I'm going to move that we meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 30A and Section 21A for the following purposes: Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brooklyn Educators Union, prepare a professional unit if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the committee and the chair so declares; and Purpose 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the interim Deputy Superintendent for Student Services; and Purpose 7, to review and approve executive session minutes from the meetings of June 8th and June 15th. Is there a second? Thank you, Stephen. Nancy, your vote?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So we will be reconvening in open session. But for now, for those of us on this Zoom call, we're going to click on the link for executive session. When we complete that executive session, we will come back and open session.
Thank you.
Mariah is in the participant, oh no, she's on the panels.
Oh, I don't see her.
I just moved her over. She'll be coming right on.
Thanks, Betsy.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We apologize for being about a half hour behind. We had a lot to go over in executive session, but now we're back in open session and we will move to the consent agenda. Past records of May 18th and several school projects, contract amendments, change orders, student trip, acceptance of gifts and grants. Before I move the consent agenda, does anyone have questions about any of these items? Seeing none, I will move the consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Steve. Helen, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Valerie? Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So that brings us to school committee actions and we will start with a possible vote to approve a memorandum of agreement with the BEU paraprofessional unit for September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2026. Andy, I'll give you the honors here. Go ahead.
Thank you, David. Should I begin by moving ratification and then we can talk a little bit about it?
Sure.
Yep, so I'd like to move school committee ratification of the MOA outlining, as you said, a three-year contract with the BEU paraprofessional unit. Do I have a second?
I think we would all love to second. So I'll give the official one to Suzanne. Helen, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, back to you, Andy.
Yeah, if I could just take a minute to describe some of the highlights of this contract. So this was signed by the bargaining teams on June twentieth and ratified by the BEU on the twenty-first, and we've just ratified as well. It runs through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, just like the units A and B contracts. So it includes a four dollar fifty cent per hour wage increase over the three years, as well as a new top step added on the last day of the contract. And so, for example, the base pay for the most senior paras in wage table two, which is the one that most paras sit in, would rise from twenty-nine sixty-nine an hour to thirty-five oh four, which is where we want to be to stay competitive. The contract also creates a new wage table for paras in certain roles who complete their training as registered behavioral technicians. They will receive three dollars an hour more than the basic wage table. We're adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday in the coming school year and Lunar New Year in the year following that. And we're adding workdays before the start of the school year to be used for training and professional development. And finally, kindergarten and first grade paras and paras assigned to the lab program will be required to receive ten hours of training in Orton Gillingham or some similar literacy program. So those are some of the things that are in this contract. If I could just thank the other members of the bargaining team on the school committee. We had Suzanne, Val and David. And we were joined by senior staff for all of our sessions. That would be Linus, Ruth Quinn Burdell, Lisa O'Connell and Ty Sucker and our attorney, Liz Valerio. Lots of hard work and late nights. Thank you, everybody.
And thank you, Andy, for bringing. I'm sorry, I just butted in. I hope that's okay, David, but Andy gets a big thank you for heavy lifting.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Suzanne?
Actually, I was just agreeing with Helen that thank you to Andy. But I will say, I feel like, you know, one of our goals on both sides is to to enhance the professionalism of the paraprofessional. And I believe that that's what the conversation was about, to give skills and training to paraprofessionals so that they can be an even bigger integral part of the teaching and learning that's going on in the schools. And so I'm excited about the work that's ahead and I'm excited about the contract.
Helen?
Yeah, just one quick question. The two new holidays, Juneteenth and and Lunar New Year, they get holidays when those fall on school days, correct? Andy?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will move to a possible vote to approve a one-year contract extension for the interim deputy superintendent of student services, subject to successful negotiations. And I will go ahead and move that we grant such approval. Is there a second? Thank you, Nancy. Any discussion? All right, Helen, your vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Suzanne, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to give a special thanks to Lisa for coming in in a situation that was challenging with lots of work that needed to be done. And I feel like Lisa has really just stepped up to the plate, has given us a lot of good work, a lot of hard hours. And I just want to give a shout out to the work that she has done this past year.
I wholeheartedly second that sentiment. I think many of us do. So thank you very much, Lisa, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. All right, next up, we have twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar, second reading and possible vote. Dr. Gilly?
So good evening, everyone. You've had the calendar in front of you. We've caught the errors that were in there and it's, I recommend approval of the calendar. We addressed, I think, many of the committee's concerns about providing details under the calendar, and I think all of those have been addressed.
Suzanne?
Yeah, and just to clarify, Dr. Gilly, I believe you've asked, so, oh, no, so this is the following, which calendars? Yeah, so this will also be.
Two years.
Right, so this will also include the new hours for the extended day for beep programs.
Yeah, so, yeah, we've placed that in there and will be engaging in that process too as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, so would someone like to move approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar? All right, thank you, Nancy. Is there a second? Thank you, Suzanne. Helen, your vote?
Sorry, yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also, yes. All right, so now we move to a discussion of a feasibility study for ADA accessibility from the Baker School to the tennis courts, discussion and possible vote. So, but, go ahead, Helen.
Oh, no, go ahead. I don't.
I was going to say, by way of a very quick summary of what's going on, the Department of Public Works generally handles what they consider to be the routine maintenance of park facilities. And there is a plan to resurface the tennis courts at Baker. As that became increasingly known in town, that there's going to be the resurfacing of the tennis courts, some concerns were raised by community members and other stakeholders that the tennis courts at Baker do not currently have direct ADA access from Baker itself without going through an adjacent private property. So there's no direct access, but there are ways for someone in a wheelchair, for instance, to get down to the tennis courts via Hancock Village, which is an adjacent parcel to the Baker School. There is at least one student at Baker who is currently in a wheelchair. The tennis courts are not exclusively used for tennis. They're used for other school-related activities. And people are concerned, rightfully, I believe, about the implications that this has, both for that one student, but also for anyone in the community who would like to be able to directly reach the tennis courts from the school itself without going through a private property that is next door and perhaps more circuitously routed for people. The next step is somewhat in the air because we've been soliciting input from town council as well as from private counsel. I had an initial conversation with a private counsel earlier today, but it was very preliminary. It was just a quick phone call, so I wouldn't really be comfortable sharing, or neither would that attorney, with sharing any definitive opinions at this juncture. I do know that there, I'm told that there has been a complaint filed with the State Architectural Access Board in regards to this situation about not providing direct ADA access as a part of the tennis court renovation. What I would like to do in terms, and the reason I docketed this for tonight, is I think that all of us strongly believe in ADA accessibility and we are certainly very concerned about any impediments that the lack of such ADA accessibility could provide to our students in the community. We want to make sure everyone has access to these tennis courts, which again are used for more than just tennis. I believe that by engaging in a feasibility study, we can begin the process of looking into the different options for providing direct access from Baker School to the tennis courts. I do also simultaneously believe that we need more input from attorneys who specialize in this area. And that's not because I think that we don't have an ethical obligation to provide for our students and community members, but because I want to make sure that we follow the correct process. I would hate to see us jump too quickly down a certain path only to find that on account of a technicality, our effort is thwarted and we have to start from the beginning again. Anytime that we are going to be planning anything, we should be engaging from a place of understanding where we all have a common set of facts. And right now, that's lacking because we're hearing a lot of different things depending on the source. So from there, I'll go ahead and call on Helen.
Thank you, David. I actually went over to Baker this morning and talked with Torrance and the principal at Baker School and with the vice principal. We went and looked at the path, the accessible path that goes through Chestnut Hill. And I mean, the most important thing to me was that the tennis court is not used as a daily place for the school. They use it more as an auxiliary space when they need an extra space, when it's maybe too hot in the gym to be in the gym or they want one class out, one class. And it's not something that's used all the time. So I think that we really need to think very carefully. We have a CIP list that includes other things that we need to have done and we need to think about prioritizing what needs to happen and not do one-offs. I worry about that because, you know, there are a number of schools where things are not totally ADA compliant. We do what we have to do and we do what we need to do. I think the issue with the basketball net that was ADA compliant that was installed was important because that's something that's used all the time by the kids. This is a different, this is not part of our curriculum. And because at none of the schools do we use the tennis courts as part of our curriculum. They happen to be there and so, you know, we can use it. The playground is totally accessible. And I think that's important to keep in mind. I guess I would like to put forward that we are going to be doing the CIP for next year. I think we need to have a full discussion at Capital about this. Put it into the pot with all the rest of the needs that we have and see what makes sense for the system, what our needs are in terms of the entire system.
Anyone else? Mariah?
Thanks. Helen, could you clarify? Because I understood that they use the tennis courts for gym. And if gym curriculum is happening, then the use of the tennis courts is part of the curriculum. If gym is happening even occasionally on the tennis courts, then the curriculum is happening on the tennis courts. It's not that tennis is part of the curriculum, but that gym activities are happening there.
It's occasionally. It's not something that they do all the time. It's because it's there because some classes go out, but not all the classes go out. I mean, you know, we will be doing a full renovation. Who knows, maybe even a rebuild of Baker. And to, we don't, to put money, I think, at this point, when we have other things that are much more critical for the functioning of the schools, I think we really need to think, to not just do it right now, but to think about this. The.
Can I, yeah, can I ask a second clarifying question? I thought I understood that there is an accessible path to the tennis courts, even though it goes through adjoining private property.
It is. It is. But it's a distance, you know, it's probably a half mile to get around there.
Oh, it's a half mile? That's not, yeah, that's not.
Well, it's accessible. It's not great.
There is. A half mile, pushing someone in a wheelchair.
Yeah, no, they don't do that. They don't do that. That class does not go out to the, the class can be held in the gym.
I see. So there's no activities. It's only basically used as a second gym?
Yeah.
Okay.
And only occasionally. So it's, you know, I think we need to put it into context, is all I'm saying.
And can I ask you one final question, David? Is there any actual action we have tonight other than, because you didn't get any clarification from the, I mean, there's no, there's no action here in terms of, the project is already initiated. As I understand it, it started last week.
They were resurfacing as I was out there.
Right, and and there is no funds in the current project for this issue, the questions of accessibility. And the questions of accessibility exist independent of the project that is ongoing anyway. So as you said, David, there was this thing you docketed of the feasibility study, but that, but there's still more to understand on that before we can even vote anything anyway, right?
Well, there is a potential vote for a feasibility study, which I think we could conduct irrespective of what the precise process is. The reason, now, there are some who, I think if I understand them correctly, would like to put a stop to what's currently taking place with the renovation or would like to immediately add some kind of intervention to have that direct ADA accessibility. I don't know whether we have the, even if we wanted to, I'm not saying that we want to stop it, but even if we wanted to, I don't know that we have that authority. I don't think that we do. And this is part of why these ongoing conversations with town council and outside council are helpful for sort of setting the context about the broader process here. Because this issue of renovating the tennis courts was never brought before the school committee. This was something that the DPW took up. And traditionally, this sort of work of park maintenance has been done exclusively by the DPW. When it pertains to a playground, the DPW certainly would consult the schools. But for something like resurfacing tennis courts or something with a basketball court, sort of what they consider to be more minor in scope projects, they don't usually go to us. But there are a lot of stakeholders here who are very concerned about the broader implications. I want to be respectful and give voice to everyone, which is one of the reasons I docketed it today. And again, irrespective of what the legal requirements may be, we can ethically choose to do whatever we like. And I think that whether, regardless as to whether we would begin the process of improving ADA access next year, two years, hopefully not further than that, but whenever it would happen, it's going to happen at some point. And a feasibility study at least allows us to start looking at what those options might be. And they could include a direct ramp. It could include maybe trying to pursue a formal easement with Hancock Village so that there might be a shorter route that could work. I'm not sure what all the other, what all the options might be, but that's exactly what a feasibility study would entail and is designed to accomplish. Nancy?
What would stopping the current work accomplish?
So there's some. Some have questioned whether there's a requirement even now to provide direct ADA access because there's a renovation underway.
And does a repaving fall under the umbrella of renovation?
Nancy, from my understanding, the rules around ADA compliance have to do with the cost of the project being more than thirty percent of the value of the entire property or the entire building or what, you know, whatever.
And does it fall under that, Helen?
That's my understanding. I mean, I think that Joe Callanan is here, the town council.
He's on this, he's at this meeting?
He's a participant.
Oh. Okay.
And Andy?
Um.
Um, I want to make a comment about the feasibility study, but I also have a question for Joe. Can I? Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make my comment, which is I'm fine with the feasibility study, but um but in, I would also like that if we made a formal request that any project, I think part of the issue is that is that for whatever reason, there's, my understanding is that there hasn't been a historical interest by school committee in these projects. But I would say that at least the ones that are CIP funded, if not, they want all of them, it would be helpful to understand what is happening by DPW in the, in the school properties. Um, there seems to be this, there's been this repeated thing said, well, school committee wasn't interested or historically hasn't been interested. And whether or not that's the case, I can't comment on, but certainly it seems that we are interested and I, I did not enjoy being caught by surprise by this project, and I would appreciate if there was, if we could request and receive a list of other projects from prior year CIPs that may be pending that are on school properties so that we can understand what else is out there. Um, I was very grateful that Erin came this year to the CIP meeting that we had to present the playground projects that were in the CIP so that we could endorse their projects. And I don't know if that similar process has happened in years past, but, but to me that was helpful because then we knew what they were requesting on our behalf. And um, and I think it would be helpful to go backwards. So that's my one statement about beyond this feasibility study, because I think as you mentioned earlier, it's really about process. And it's unclear either just because there's no record or I don't know that what the process was to get to this point. So I just wouldn't like that to happen. Then my next question is, Helen just mentioned
Respond to that, Mariah?
Yeah, yeah.
Because Erin did come. I, you know, she may have said in passing that they were resurfacing this. I do, don't remember that. Um, however, um, I, I
She did come, you mean, this year?
I'm sorry?
You mean she did come this year?
You said
Yeah.
Yeah, right. But what I'm, what, what my point is that I will make a point to make sure that she comes to talk to us in September at our meeting about what they're putting in for the CIP for the schools.
But the whole point is this wasn't from this year CIP. This is from the FY sixteen and FY twenty CIPs.
Right.
This, so, so she, but so the question
We can ask, are there any un, un, you know?
But I'm asking if we can get that list even beforehand, if we can request the list independent of coming in August, if we can get the list before then too, that would be helpful to understand. Thank you. And, and then um the other question was the, there's been um researched by precinct sixteen town meeting members um about a separate section of the um state, I don't know what it is. The state, state law, I'm not even sure what thing it is that CMR is. I'm like showing my ignorance now. But that it was about, about tennis courts having a different standard for requirements for accessibility that the thirty percent didn't apply, that tennis courts are just required to be accessible. And I was wondering if Joe could comment on that versus the thirty percent requirement?
All right, uh, Joe, are you willing to, Town Council Callanan, you willing to uh answer that?
So I was not prepared to uh attend tonight's meeting and speak. Uh, I was just here as an observer, but um you know, I will say there is no question by the Director of Engineering, the, 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 or, you know, Director of Public Works, the ADA Coordinator for the town, the Building Commissioner and Town Council that this project complies with the ADA. Um, that's our um opinion based on our expertise, but then we double checked twice with the Architectural Access Board staff. So there's absolutely no question in our minds that the project complies with the uh accessibility requirements imposed by the state. But um if you have, if, if you have questions for me, you all have my uh phone number. I answer your, your calls all the time. Uh, I'm not prepared to give legal advice in a public meeting. Uh, when we have assertions of this claims against the town and school department about this issue, but uh just to reiterate, there's no question in our mind that it complies with the CMR, which is code of Massachusetts regulations in the building code.
All right, thank you. Andy?
Yeah, thanks, David. I just have a question. So we're being asked to support a feasibility study. Uh, who would be performing this study? Um, how would we find the resources to pay them? And how do we know that this wouldn't be duplicating staff work that's also underway?
Well, it seems, I don't know with absolute certainty, but it appears that other departments are undertaking this work. Although I do think from a, actually from a conversation I had with Aaron Gallantine, there was uh at least some very preliminary uh rough estimates provided for what the cost might be for a ramp directly from Baker to the tennis courts. I'm not sure how much uh that inquiry cost. It doesn't sound like it was a, a huge cost. We could limit in scope the costs we're talking about for an initial feasibility study. But I think generally looking at this issue, so we have a better sense of what the possibilities might be, would serve us well.
But again, who, who would be doing that, that looking like? Who are we commissioning to do it? Or would we be expecting town staff to devote their time and resources to this?
I would be expecting that the school department would do this because we're talking about ADA access at a school.
Hey, thank you.
Can I jump in?
Go ahead.
Because we don't have that capacity um or knowledge within the department. Um, it, it just makes more sense for it to be part of the CIP if that's what we decide we want to put as our priority in the CIP. That's where things then get divvied out among the, the, you know, the building department then would take it on. And um, and that's where it should be. They have the engineers, they have the, the ability to do this. We, we do education. You know, and I think we should let those who do the other stuff do that.
So Helen, when we conduct feasibility studies around en- entire school building projects, that's not within the school department? We have the building department do that?
Together with us, we, we, we work together with them, you know, I mean, and you know, like for instance, with the mini CIP, that, that's what this would fall under for next year would be the mini CIP. We worked together with Charlie. We put together what our needs are. He talks about what, you know, things have to happen. And then we, we prioritize through the Capitol Subcommittee. So we did for this, this summer.
All right, Natalia?
Thanks, uh, David and Helen and everyone. I'm catching up. It does to me feel a little bit like a feasibility study is just inadequate to address the, you know, the concerns that have been raised. So I feel a little bit like that we're not doing enough, but I'm trying to understand the tennis courts are open to the public, including residents, including, so is this a cost to the schools or is it a cost to the town? Like, I don't understand if the tennis are primarily used not by school students. They're used occasionally as a secondary. Like, I would be for a ramp, of course, but I don't think that that should come out of a school budget necessarily if it's a primarily to be used by the whole town and the community. And who makes those decisions?
I think that the uh issue there, Natalia, is also up for um further study because we've heard that the tennis courts are school property. Others say that it's a town property. Some have said it's a mix that is about eighty percent, twenty percent each. Uh, in my conversations with the DPW, they've indicated that if we were to construct a ramp from uh directly from Baker School to the tennis courts, that would need to come out of the school CIP because we're requesting a direct connection to Baker School. And when it's the general public utilizing the tennis courts, they wouldn't need to be coming from inside of Baker. Baker would generally be closed during non-school hours when the public would be utilizing the tennis courts. There is currently an ADA accessible entrance to the tennis courts from the Chestnut Hill Realty property at Hancock Village. There are uh some parking spaces that are near that ADA accessible entrance that are, uh, I believe designated for vans that can equip, that are equipped for those who are disabled. So I think that's where that currently stands.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up? On the weekends, for example, does the Baker School, I mean, I know my daughter does soccer there on the weekends, you know, on the, like, and we park there. So if somebody were to park there and then use the tennis courts, like, I don't understand. It's not a school function. She's work, she does soccer with Brooklyn, you know, so part of me feels that the times when people would be using the tennis courts for recreation, including weekends, like, are they able to access it from a Baker ramp? Um, would that be the easiest way rather than going through private property, even if it was a public? Like, would the public access be through Baker anyways, uh, rather than through Hancock Village or something?
Natalia, there's steps that go down that are not handicapped accessible. In order to make it handicapped accessible from, it, we're talking about probably a two-floor drop from where the parking lot steps begin and where the tennis courts are. So it would have to be a very long back and forth. Um, and it, the, the, it's not just that you, you, you could do that if it were, you know, firm land, but you don't know exactly what's under there. So there'd have to be a lot of investigation to figure that out. But people who want to play tennis who live on Beverly Road or above can walk down, or if they're handicapped, they can go around. And um, and park at um, at Chestnut Hill Realty. That's the two ways to get in.
All right, anyone else? Steven?
Yeah, um. Thanks for this discussion. It's not clear to me what actions we're moving towards, but from this, so I read through the, the email thread from the past few days. Um, but just listening to this conversation alone, it seems to me that the standard that we should be talking about is not ADA compliance, but um accessibility for all students to any recreation that happens in the course of attending Baker School. Um, just even considering the fact that there was a memo produced stating that the Pierce School was ADA compliant, I think suggests that there are different standards at play. I think anyone who toured the Pierce facility would agree that it's not accessible for every learner. And that was one strong reason for why most of us in the school committee supported overhauling the building for the same reason, I think. Uh, having students in wheelchairs take a half-mile route to the tennis courts in the course of accessing it for a gym class at Baker cannot possibly be considered accessible, even if it is considered ADA compliant. So I think for the school committee's purpose, we should focus on a different threshold than ADA compliance, which is more amenable to a standard that we think supports students accessing all of the, the, all of the uh, all of the aspects of Baker that we think is conducive to fulfilling their educational experience. So that's what I just wanted to chime in with saying now. Thanks.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I'm wondering, David, if you could uh elaborate a little more on the feasibility study? You know, who would do it? Who would pay for it? How long would it take?
Earlier, I thought it would be the school department, but I uh stand corrected from Helen's uh ample experience running the Capitol Subcommittee that this would be something undertaken by the building department in conjunction with the school department. So my suggestion now would be that we recommend to the building departments to conduct a feasibility study for accessibility, I'll call it, instead of ADA, because I uh take Stephen's point to heart that it shouldn't really matter whether something is officially ADA compliant or not. We want to do what's right and what's ethically right. And so that speaks more to accessibility in general. So I would recommend that we ask the building department to undertake a feasibility study for accessibility from Baker to the tennis courts.
And will we have to vote on it? Cost for that or they will do that or?
Since that would be on, on them to decide, I would leave that to them. I don't think we can. First of all, we can't impose it directly. It's a different department, but we can certainly recommend that they undertake it.
Thank you.
Nancy?
All right, Stephen, to your point, I think we all agree that it would be absolutely necessary um for that tennis court to be ADA compliant from the Baker School. And absolutely, that, that is the absolute best case scenario. Is the, is the primary part of this discussion though, David? To halt, to agree to halt? Like, work on the tennis court, court now? Is that what, is that what the town and certain constituents are asking us to do? Are they asking us to stop work until we can make this done? Because of course, we're going to, now that this is um part of our, has been brought to our attention, yes, of course, we're gonna to look to do this, but are they asking us to stop everything in order to make that happen? Do you know what I mean?
I, I hear you. I'm not in a position to answer that question. So I don't know what every single constituent's viewpoint is, but I do, I do not think that's the main thrust of this. I think the concern is this renovation's taking place. There needs to be accessibility. Right now, the accessibility component's not being addressed, so address it as soon as possible. That's the sense I'm getting.
Stephen, is that what you, is that what you're saying?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not making a recommendation with respect to what uh, what TMMs are petitioning to town for. I'm just arguing that the, the threshold that the school committee should consider isn't ADA compliant, but something um but something more targeted at the student's educational experience.
I agree.
Which is more rigorous.
Right, and, and I think that's the, the right path that Stephen's outlining because what I was saying in the beginning of my remarks about being concerned with the process and what the precise legalities are would be germane if we were looking at the formal legal definition of ADA compliance, where there, there can be some gray areas and people can argue in both directions. But if ultimately what we want to do is make the courts meaningfully accessible, then it doesn't really matter what the law says for that part of it.
Right.
Mariah?
Thanks. Um, and uh, Stephen, I completely agree, and I wanted to bring this back to, as you say, the student experience. Um, and to say that I was really happy that we had supported the accessible basketball hoops. And some of the other things in the school that people have mentioned um aren't accessible and can, rather than focusing on the tennis courts um to the exclusion of the overall student experience, can we, I guess, part of this feasibility study to me, I mean, maybe it's not part of the formal feasibility study is can we hire, and this is a school committee thing, hire uh if we need to, or our own internal expertise, an accessibility specialist who can go through the grounds of the school. And for example, the, the, it has been brought up that the playground uses wood chips instead of infill or mats or something, and so the playground itself is not accessible. So, so can we basically, um, I, I guess, I, I had incorrectly, or maybe correctly, um, I had assumed that the basketball hoops were the thing that needed to be fixed and that everything else was what it needed to be to make it accessible, but it sounds like there's broader things here going on. So can our, can our feasibility study really just be an accessibility specialist who looks through and makes recommendations on the things in the school that need to be fixed, whether it's the best, the, the tennis courts, the playground, whatever else needs to be fixed to make the school truly accessible as opposed to ADA compliant, to Stephen's point?
I, I certainly
And that would fall within our, our bailiwick because we could hire a specialist through OSS as needed.
I like that idea, Mariah, but I think that broadens the scope significantly and has implications elsewhere that it would necessitate a broader discussion before we committed to that right away. Because I, it sounds like you're talking about a permanent hire who would be
No, no, I'm talking about someone who walks the building for a, a couple hours.
I see.
Yeah, this is not a permanent hire whatsoever.
I, I will note that we do have a um outside firm that we consult with regularly on ADA related issues. And I, I checked with an attorney there just earlier today regarding the situation with Baker. Uh, so they're going to be working on this further, and I can certainly broach that broader idea with them in addition to whatever the committee would like to decide today. in addition to whatever the committee would like to decide today. Uh, Helen?
I still think that we need to have a conversation, I, I would like to bring this issue back to Capitol Subcommittee meeting in July, we have a meeting already post, or not posted, but, uh, scheduled for July. Um, where, uh, there's always an ADA line item in the, uh, in Charlie's budget. And so that may be where this will fit into, I think we need to work together with our town partners to, to figure out what needs to happen, rather than us trying to, to go off on our own in an area that we don't have the expertise. I do think also that, uh, DPW knows the terrain, understands it. We need to, I mean, they're probably the ones that would do this project as opposed to, uh, the building, uh, department. Um, so I, I think, you know, trying to figure it out here is not that to me doesn't make sense. I think that, you know, getting the parties together, figuring out a plan of how to, to, to look at this. Especially if, if Mariah's, you know, if there are other issues at Baker, I'm sure there are many issues, Baker's an old school. We plan on doing a renovation there. Usually in schools where we're doing, going to be doing a renovation, we don't put a lot of money into it until, unless we have to. Certainly, and if we have to, we do. So I think we need to weigh a lot of things here.
Can I just respond to that real quickly, David? Just that, I, I hear what you're, what I like about our long-term planning is that Baker's on the horizon, but realistically, a Baker playground renovation isn't going to happen for ten years probably. So pointing to that long timeline as saying we shouldn't do anything, that's a long time.
I don't think it'll be ten years and also, well, a- and that's why I'm saying if there are certain things on the playground, certainly that, you know, that are impeding. Um, you know, then I think we need to look at it, but I think we need to do it in conjunction with our partners in the town.
Of course, of course, but if the question is, well, anyway, I think I agree, it has to be done in conjunction.
Natalia?
I'd like to put it on the, you know, the, the agenda for the meeting and invite the DP, uh, Erin to come along with, uh, Charlie, who will be there.
Thanks, I just wanted to make sure that I'm on the record supporting sort of Steven's view of accessibility, not just ADA compliance. I just wanted to say that that is my hope, and I don't know if the feasibility study tweaked in the way that Mariah suggested to really, um, think about access is the way, but, you know, the commitment, as you said, David, at the beginning, that we all share needs to be sort of established, and I know, um, anyways, I, I spoke about costs before and who bears the cost, but I didn't make it clear that I, I see it as a top priority and accessibility is, uh, a real commitment on my end too, thanks.
And, and I think that by conducting or recommending that the building departments and DPW in conjunction with us undertake this effort for feasibility will allow us to gather the necessary facts so that we're in a better position to assess our priorities. Because I, I hear what you're saying, Helen, that there are a lot of different items and that we don't necessarily want to pour a lot of money into one specific task, only to maybe have to respend it a few years later. Uh, I understand that, but how do we really know what it, what we would be spending if we don't conduct feasibility? I think that we need to engage in that type of fact gathering to better understand our priorities so that we can make more informed decisions.
Good.
Anyone else?
Could I ask what the precise wording of the motion would be for this?
So I'll go to Mariah and then I'll answer that question, Andy.
I was gonna suggest an alternative, uh, motion, which is like, that we are, or something along the lines of. I'm not sure we're ready to vote, or at least I'm not sure I'm ready to say exactly that I want to support a feasibility study, but that I want us to continue to pursue the accessibility, um, accessibility at Baker for students. Um, and, and to prioritize that, but not, but I don't know that I want to say we want to, I, I personally don't want to vote for a feasibility study, which feels very specific to me right now, and isn't necessarily the way we might want to structure this after we talk with the building department. And Torrance, for example.
And DPW, we, we would need all of them.
And DPW, right.
So Helen, can we make sure that we invite all of those people to our next?
Uh, I, Torrance, I can't talk for, I know that Erin's on vacation, so I assume she won't be then, but, yeah.
Well, well, I certainly share this broader concern about accessibility in general at all our schools, including Baker. I worry that if we endorse something that's that macro level that we are, that we might not actually adequately address the tennis courts, which is what brought us to this discussion today. And I think we can do both. Uh, I don't think one has to be at the exclusion of the other. So I would still like to move that we recommend to the building department and to the DPW uh, to work with us on a feasibility study or accessibility from Baker School to the tennis courts. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, David, a feasibility study for what, can you say that again?
For providing accessibility from the Baker School to the tennis courts.
I'll second that.
Can I, can I amend it, David?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, to work with the building department and DPW to evaluate the accessibility of Baker School for its students.
If I can maybe double amend that to, uh, to, to explicitly include the tennis courts, since that's what, that, that's what brought this issue to the forefront, so I want to make sure that's not lost.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay, so with.
So, sorry, so the motion is work with DPW to, to evaluate the accessibility of Baker with a specific emphasis on the tennis courts?
Yeah, I think it, well, and the building, it's not just the DPW, but the building park department, but it's, and it's not just the school, but the grounds, including the tennis courts, right, because there was the issue of the playground as well.
Right.
Yeah, I would say including the tennis courts rather than with special emphasis on the tennis courts.
Okay, agree, including the tennis courts.
I second it still.
Any further discussion? Suzanne?
Uh, so can, do we have something about our capital subcommittee? I mean, I just think it's critical that what Helen's been saying, that she is a part of that.
Helen is saying that she'll take this up at the July meeting, and I trust that she'll do a great job with it. But I do think it's important for the full committee to weigh in on our values of increasing accessibility.
No, I understand that.
David, is it correct that this motion is essentially expressing a sentiment that then capital will, will execute? Isn't that the idea?
It is.
Well, I, I would like that in the motion somewhere, so, so that somebody on school committee, that would be Helen, will, will be our voice on this and we'll move this forward.
All right, we can add that in, Betsy, I know this is a, a lot of additions, but do you think you have? Yes, all right. Okay, so we're adding in that the capital subcommittee will be specifically tasked with following up on this under Helen's direction. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and vote, Helen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Steven?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yeah.
Valerie?
Yes.
Natalia?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Uh, I'd also like to thank, uh, Town Council Callanan for joining us today. Uh, it was not our intention to ambush you, I wasn't aware that you would be joining, but I did also want to give you the opportunity to be heard in case you wanted to, because I saw that you joined our meeting. All right, so on that note, we can move on to new business, is there any new business? All right, seeing none, we can adjourn.
Bye.